Tina's going to turn her phone on and begin recording.
Okay.
Yes, Bert, it's working now. Let me go out and test.
Okay, I'll give you a few minutes.
Sorry, Bert, yes, the recording. But televised is not required.
I agree, televised is not required. I was going toward just the voice recording.
Yes.
Sound though.
Sound though, okay.
I was going to say, my husband just said it's working now.
Hermanians say it's working.
Technology.
Broadband.
She's ready?
She's ready.
All right.
Recording and streaming.
All right, very good. All right, any other public comments? All right, we'll go, uh, we'll go to the consent agenda, A through D.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any comments from the podium?
I have two comments on two different meetings. So on the, hopefully I can get these meetings right. On the November fourth town council meeting under the, um, the pickleball, I think one of the things that was raised that needs to be included is concerns raised on the R-PAC risk since the scope has changed from paving in the boat ramp area to just pervious parking. The town administrator says Brandon Gunn of R-PAC stated no concerns. So that's fine, but that needs to be included, I believe, in the minutes.
Was that for the October fourth meeting, which was the workshop?
No, I, I have November four-
November fourth, I'm sorry.
November fourth.
Is that the workshop meeting or was that-
I don't think it was the workshop meeting. It's-
Hold on.
It's on page twelve of seventy-nine, so that would be the eleven.
Yes, page twelve, that was the work, uh, page seven? Page seven?
Page twelve of page seventy-nine. And I'm trying to backtrack to see which meeting. I think that's the November fourth. Is it November tenth? I'm sorry, the November tenth, the first meeting of November.
I'll leave it to council to vote to change. I don't know what section that was.
It was, it was in the, I guess it's under the public comments. It was un, it's under the pickleball, moving forward with the pickleball, on the FERDAP and the R-PAC grants to, to continue to take the money from the one. And then under public comments included, there were concerns raised, and this is one of the res, the concerns, is the risk with R-PAC because the R-PAC, um, s, grant stated paving and paved and pervious parking. And now it's just pervious parking, no paving. And questions continue to come up, is that putting our PAC grant at risk, the $299,000? Because we've changed from the scope of the work to just pervious parking. And that's, everybody wanted the boat ramp area with all those potholes. So that continues to be a concern, but I guess Charlotte had talked with Brandon Gunn at R-PAC and he said, nope, there's no concerns, it's conceptual plan. I think a lot of people still don't think changing from pavement to just per, pavement of the boat ramp area and paved and pervious parking to just pervious parking is just conceptual. There's material changes.
And as summary action minutes, we try to capture everything. I leave it to council to vote if they want to make the change.
It was, it was, it was a comment that came out in the meeting.
So, okay, you need a motion? I re-
Well, she has another change, so if there's-
Well, for the, this is for this meeting. The next one would be the second meeting, a change for the second meeting. Do you need to take them one at a time?
No, I can take them all at once.
Okay.
Or you can all-
So then the November seventeenth meeting. And this is something I said, so this would be what my recommendation to change would be. Councilwoman Charles addressed concerns on the 192,000 infrastructure reserve being used and utility, the utility infrastructure being used, which should go out to bid as a separate project and also reviewed with the recommendations to proceed from the utility commission. So 192,000 was considered under the value engineering, but it's going to be a separate fund that's going to be used. But rather than go out to bid, we're going to continue with the same supplier who bid it versus $192,000 infrastructure, utilities infrastructure project should go to the utilities commission. Town attorney disagrees with, with the Muni code and, but, um, but it also should be a separate project by itself. I'm, I'm not opposed to the project, it's just never come to council or the utility commission on exactly what it is. And it was incorporated into a bigger project scope. And now we're pulling it out to fund it separate, which means it's a separate project. So my, my words on that was Councilwoman Charles addressed concerns on the $192,000 utility infrastructure reserve being used, which should be bid out as a separate project and also reviewed with recommendations to proceed from the utility commission.
Can I make a- And just for the record, we've gone to action minutes because if we do the back and forth of who said she said and go back and forth with that, we will have extensive minutes for our town clerk to record. So that's why we've kept it to action items.
And there have been previous, um, comments that my minutes prior to were not being put forward accurately. So I've moved to action minutes for that purpose. Um, so I can just get the facts and the motions out as best that I can.
But we're not consistent. So that's, it's, it's up to council. Those are my concerns on significant spending.
And if anyone ever wants to know, it's always able to be able to record it. And we've also provided it with historical knowledge that anyone can request at any time. And that's also been published to the website for pertaining to pickleball and anyone. And also in the packets, we have also provided historical documentation.
So where we at?
So because this is not like a he said, she said, but there are things that were stated that were, wanted to be in the record as being concerns. Um, I would like to add to make a motion to address her Councilwoman Charles' concerns and that the notes would reflect that there were, uh, there was a discussion regarding whether the change in scope would affect our eligibility for the grant, the, uh, FERDAP grant.
R-PAC.
R-PAC grant. And then the second one for the record is the question as to whether the 192,000 should have gone before the utilities commission.
My only concern is, is that because the minutes have gotten so long and that this was an actual decision to be made, we're only going to do it, the minutes are going to be action minutes. They're not going to be, I said something and now I want it on the minutes too. And then we want the, some of the public wants their comments on there. Because it's gotten so lengthy, what we've tried to do, and I think this is the movement, this is all new, this is new. It's not, okay, so we're not going to be changing around. It's just a movement to make it more efficient. And the requirement is, is to do the action minutes, not to have the histor, historical record put into the minutes. So if we start going backwards, we're going to say, well, I said this, and let's put that in there. And then somebody's going to say, well, I said this, let's put that in there. So action minutes are a new thing. It's a brand new way to do this. I agree with that. I think the action minutes are what actually happens. If you want to get into the detail of discussion, then we can put everything anybody said in the whole meeting, which some of our meetings are four or five hours long. And I can say, well, I wasn't in there. Why wasn't, why, what I said in there? So what I'm trying to say is that we have moved to a more efficient way of doing the minutes. I agree with that. So I'd like my motion to stand.
Uh, I'd like my second to stand as well. And I agree, uh, minutes are supposed to be a compilation of what occurred. And, um, if we need to get a verbatim of, of what, what occurred, then we should go back, or whomever is wanting to do that should go back into the public record and, and view the recording of the min, the meeting. And then everything that everyone said can be clearly, uh, clearly noted. But these are minutes, these are summaries of what happened. And, uh, I think, uh, I think that's, that's what it needs to be. Because I, I know that if I went through the minutes, there's a lot of things that I've said during the meetings that are not written down here verbatim of what I said. Um, but the, the sum total of what happened is what's in, is what's in the minutes. And that's what minutes are for. So my, I would like my second to stand as well.
And that's fine. My comment was because these are very significant impacts on both of these. One is a procurement impact of a project that's over 10,000 that should go out to bid, but it was incorporated into a bigger project, but then separately pulled out as a separate project, but saying we're not going to go out to bid because it went out to bid in the bigger project. That's a red flag concern to me for internal controls. And then the second is, I am concerned on the R-PAC because of the change in scope, not the conceptual change. So, you know, again, it's up to council, I get it. But I think that both of these are pretty significant. And, and I would think that anything that's significant, we would want the records, the written record to acknowledge. I think all that was stated during the meeting. And now we're bringing it up and it's not even on the agenda for anybody here to discuss it again. So we're discussing an issue that we voted on and was ended. And now we're in the minutes, we're just approving minutes. Now we're going back, and I think I've heard everything you said at that meeting. And I remember you saying that. But to rehash it now when we're just approving the minutes, I think we're getting into discussion that we shouldn't be having because it's not on the agenda. And somebody else could be here and they said, well, I remember it this way and I remember it that way. So I'm just saying, let's, I think we should just move on with the minutes. If you don't, if you don't like the way they're being done now, action, we don't want to move to action minutes, then you should say that. And then we'll just start having a thousand pages every day, every time we meet of the hours of meetings because I want there, in there, what I said too. I said it, it's on record and it can be pulled up as a packer, uh, public record request. But just for a minute, it's supposed to be action items. So I think that's where we've moved, to keep it simple, to know what the actual facts were in a detailed way. And if that wasn't done properly, then yes, we need to address it. But I think this is a brand new, it is a new concept. I agree.
Okay.
Paya Ventures, one two three seven three, Lost Lake Drive, Lake Placid. Um, I, these were extremely detailed minutes. I read the packet. So in there you have the original motion, you had amended motion, extremely detailed. I think if, um, Councilwoman Charles had made the motion to include, I make a motion to approve blah, 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 with these conditions in there, and it was then seconded and, and the majority voted in favor of it, then the actual action item would reflect that. However, the motion was made and seconded and the vote was a three to two on the actual motion made that night. So you can't go, even the comments say there were two hours and discussion went back and forth and the public came up and discussed. You can't add that to later on back, like, I liked this one, I didn't like this. You can't add that back to the, the motion that was passed that night. It's very simple. Well, I know, but that's what it's, it's, it's picking and choosing what, just to then say we, we voted on. I don't think you can do that. I don't think you can open up. Thank you.
Let me comment. Thank you, Pam, but that wasn't the intent. It was under, there's, there's comments captured. So there was no intent at all on the motion that was made. It's the minutes from that meeting that are being captured now is what I said. There was a couple of items that should, were missing.
Agree. It's not to change or revote or anything. It's just when there was something significant that, to just put it in the record that, that the red flag was raised on such and such, and that's it. Not to rehash it, not to revote, just to know that the concern was expressed.
All right, so where are we?
We have a motion to second.
To do what?
To approve A through D.
To what?
To approve the consent agenda unless Councilmember Worley or Hayes would like to add the additional.
Well, I don't agree. And, and there's things I said that if we're going to start doing that, let's just put everybody's comments in there because it's, I think what I say is significant as well. Okay? So what I said is significant. And if it can't be in there too, that, I mean, we're doing a new way of doing this. This is a new day, a new efficient way of addressing our meetings and helping staff as well. But it's being very concise and consistent. And I don't think, I think this is a better way to do it. And I think it's actually a more fair way because what if somebody's comments gets in there and mine don't? And I'm not going to sit up here and belate, oh, well, I said this and it can't be in there. So I think this is much more efficient. So I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Um, I think, I'm not going to do it Robert's rules of order, but I just think we need to vote on this.
All right, go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
No.
Councilmember Eber.
Uh, I don't have anything on number five. All right, we'll go to public hearings. Second reading ordinance 2025 dash nineteen.
I want to make a motion to approve and adopt upon second reading ordinance number 2025 dash nineteen to amend the 2024 dash 2025 annual budget to reflect annual expenses and to make the- line item adjustment, decreasing the budget by 11,128, is that a type of?
It's 11 million.
11 million.
Pardon, 11 million? That's not a type of it. Yay, okay. 11,128,263.69 with an effective date of September 30th, 2025. Second.
I'm going to have to read the ordinance in entirely for the record. Ordinance number 2025-19, and Norland's of the Town of Lake Placid, providing for amendments to the town budget, providing light item adjustments to reflect actual expenses and revenue, and to remove budget projects that rolled over into the 2025-2026 fiscal year, and providing for an effective date. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Take it to the audience. Bring them back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now go to action agenda, and this is property lot A, block 209, Placid Lakes Industrial Park. And I'll turn this over to our town attorney.
You can see the question presented by Mr. Rhodes. You can see the question presented by Mr. Rhodes. I have, absent authority by the town, I have not pulled title work. Mr. Rhodes did. I have not done basic examination. You see his question. I don't see, I, I don't know the history of this purported Lake Placid Public Library Board of Directors. I don't know whether it's an affiliate of the town. I have no personal recollection of it. I know there was a board of directors of friends of the library sometime back. This is, it looks like a low-value property, and they're asking the town to give a deed to it. I see no greater interest that they have than, than we would have. No, no greater right or claim. And they act like the town has no interest. Well, if we don't, they know, don't need a deed from us. If we do, we ought to say it's mine. I, I don't have an answer because I haven't done any diligence beyond what you see in this agenda item. If they're going to get a deed out of the town, they would need an ordinance. That's the only way you can convey real property. That's per your, not your code, but your charter, and that cost, of course, should be theirs, not the town's. So I look for your direction.
So did, Mr. Harris, did you, did you do these options where we have option to authorize staff to seek information on the grantee and the original deed from Mr. Tobler and report back to council to determine whether to claim of disclaim, whether to claim of disclaim and interest? And then the second point is, if disclaimer is determined to be the next step, staff recommend that the required research ordinance, et cetera, be at the expense of those clearing title. Is that, is that from you? Okay, and, and then the only thing I would say, which is, this is what we need to do, is that, that they should be responsible for all costs to the town, even during your research, that we shouldn't, I mean, I, obviously, I think this is just a title problem that was somehow passed along and missed. I agree with that, but I don't think that we should be paying to correct it.
I agree.
Okay, so I, whatever, however we need to word it, maybe you could give us, if that's the direction of what everybody wants to do, maybe give us a motion that we can say, that motion. But I wanted to, me personally, I don't, I don't want, I think this is just a title clearance, but it shouldn't cost the town anything to give them clear title.
Do you want me or anyone else on staff to do any further diligence, or do you just want to say, Mr. Rhodes, if you want to clear it, your cost, that's, I, I can do either. It does not matter to me. And like you, I don't know whether there is any basis for the town's claim or not.
Well, even if we had a claim, it's, it's, for the public, the just value of the property would be 10,000, which equate to fair market value of 12,000, which is because of, well, if you're going off the appraisers' records, they cut out, you know, 20%.
And we do.
So, I mean, if we, I mean, if we could go to a full appraisal, but it just sounds like it's just, it's a clearing title, and I don't know what you all think, but I think that maybe we should, as long as you're, you know, it's, it's up to you, whatever we should do. Me.
Can, can anybody summarize the short version of this? Is this a lot out in Placid Lakes? You know, I'm, I'm trying to figure out exactly what this is. And it's saying, like, a lot out in Placid Lakes Industrial Park, or?
Correct.
So not even the town limits, something that the town owned? Or, or Placid Lakes owned and the library? And so I'm trying, I'm trying to understand the backstory on this. By, when I read all this, it still made no sense to me, like.
That's what we've been trying to unravel as well, because it doesn't, it didn't make sense to us either, Councilwoman Charles, and Eva did a search, and we can find nothing on this, and the same is what our town attorney is saying. So, but it's, it's been brought to our attention because they believe that we have some responsibility in that.
Are they trying to sell it, and that's where it came out? So there, there's a specific lot out in Placid Lakes Industrial site that somebody wants to sell, and somewhere deep into the title search, similar to Mr. Pfeiffer's project, property and some others, that this is coming out, that whoever the owner thinks he is really, there's a tie to Lake Placid Town?
Well, it was a little bit different from Pfeiffer's, and that this one was a specific deed, and I can't read the date on it, I believe it was back in the eighties, out of August Tobler, who was the developer of Placid Lakes.
Right.
To.
The owner.
Or the library board.
The library board, Lake Placid Library Board. I don't know who that is.
Bert, you're the historian, how would we ever have a tie way out in Placid Lakes?
Well, I remember there, there was a group of ladies, and Ms. Hargrove was one, but I don't remember them doing business under that name. It was, they were more the historical folks.
So has this been a taxable, a property taxable property? Has somebody been paying, has, has this owner been paying property taxes on this, which alludes that they own it?
I don't recall the tax history that was disclosed to us. Do you remember?
This, this letter says that.
What I, what I think is that this is just not worthy of wasting time on. I don't think anybody remembers the 1987. The detail is not available. It's just to clear a title so these people can move on with their lives, and as long as it doesn't cost us any money, I would just say, let's just move on and get it, the title straightened out, not spend any more time on it. It's just a waste of time to me.
Thank you. And if you'll make a motion to that effect, I'll tell Mr. Rhodes he can prepare the appropriate ordinance, or I will at his expense, and it'll have to be advertised, and proceed with the deed.
I make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further comments? Take it to the audience. Bring them back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
All right, I'll take it to staff. We have anything that want to bring up? I don't know, you want to talk anything about the Christmas parade?
The parade is this Saturday. I haven't spoken to the chief yet, but I believe typical shutdown of Dow Hall is around 3:30, and what is Interlake, like 6:30?
Currently, the shutdown will be at 4:30 on Dow Hall. They've set it back to 4:30. The float lineup will begin at 5:00, and Interlake shutdown will be at 6:45.
Okay. I'll bring it back. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I do. As town attorney, I am deeply concerned about an issue that I need to bring before council. In 2021, the town applied for an FDEP septic-to-sewer grant. Shortly thereafter, the town, based on that application, was awarded $40 million. The application and the grant agreements that followed made clear that the money was to be awarded to the town for the septic-to-sewer projects. No other purpose was mentioned. The town's new advanced wastewater treatment plant will soon be completed early next year. It is my opinion as town attorney that the town should amend the utility code to reserve a specific amount of sewer capacity for the town's septic-to-sewer project that was funded by FDP, FDEP for that particular purpose. Failure to amend your code would allow sewer capacity to be issued to new development, which is not what the town said it would do with the money. My recommendation is that you immediately begin the process of amending or considering the amendment to the town code to reserve a specific amount of capacity for the septic-to-sewer project. Not asking for a decision on that amendment tonight, but I would recommend that you refer it to the utility, pardon me, the utility committee for consideration forthwith.
Do you, do you have a recommendation of what level that should be? Because you've, you're kind of the author, and you've been spearheading this 40 million, you know, from the beginning. And I know there was different, you know, if there's 3,600 homes, and 2,600 homes, and 700, and then zero, so what, what level are you thinking?
I've given that a lot of thought over the past several months, and I would like to say that I really think that would be better discussed as we develop the entire concept rather than just my opinion, because there are other opinions, I assure you, as to what should be set aside. If you pin me down and want my opinion, I'll give you that tonight, but I would prefer that it go to the utility board to be properly considered and developed.
Okay, fair enough.
That's why I'd like, let, let Bert in the utility department handle that.
Yes, I'd like to make a statement to that, because this has been an ongoing conversation. And while I do understand and respect our town attorney's position, I think that we have a utility director, so this is his level of expertise, and this is his area that he should be speaking on and making the recommendations.
And note, I did not exclude Bert Warner from this discussion in the least.
Understand that, understand that.
But as town attorney, this is my opinion that we should act on this matter.
Okay.
And that would make my heart happy, because you know, when, when we talked, and I was always afraid that if we didn't fulfill the septic-to-sewer, we'd be in trouble.
Yes, ma'am.
But I need to make clarification, because sometimes what we put into the public may not necessarily be full and true in its entirety, because we have spoken to FDIP, and we've had these conversations on reserving, and we have had the conversations with our town attorney present, and we have had many conversations about making sure we're upholding the grant. So if we, this is not on the agenda, so I don't think that this is proper. It is, we were both blindsided by this comment, or our town attorney even bringing this forward.
Because he's tried several times, and you've blocked it each time.
Because you're inaccurate.
Because you're inaccurate.
I'm not.
I am absolutely.
No, you are inaccurate.
We're not going there. You've said it, I'll leave it up to Bert.
As Charlotte said, that we haven't been talking to DEP, and they've given us different options. So they're like, Charlotte said, this is not the time, because it's not on the agenda, but we do need to talk about this. We are allowed to do some development, we are allowed to have reservations for septic-to-sewer. It's just something that has to be discussed, and, and like I said, it's not on the agenda today, and I wasn't aware this was coming up.
Okay.
Can, can I just assume that we are all in agreement that there should be some sort of reserve? Just how much is up for discussion?
I think we're way off. We should have it on the agenda. I don't think we should be discussing this right now. I feel uncomfortable.
Okay.
Okay, this is just not on the agenda. There's people that are very invested in this on, on different levels, whether they're part of the, the, the property owners and that, and I just think this is, we do not need to be discussing this at this point. This is just comments.
Okay.
May I speak?
Where are we at?
You're talking about the sewer to?
This is not an action agenda, so it's the board talking.
Okay, it's just the board talking, okay. Any other comments from the board?
On that topic, or we're just?
No, on this topic. Okay.
Josephine Calmly, 607 Sunset Point. This is where I have to take a deep breath. Somewhere along the line, the council has underestimated so many projects, it just makes you sick. I don't know how you could ever estimate the wastewater treatment plant being $3 million. Okay, that's not that long ago. Now we're up to 38, 39, 40 million dollars. We got a problem. And then we go, we estimate all these other projects. Pickle Bowl is going to be 550, now it's 700, 800. Police Department's going to be 1.3 million, now it's 2,400. I mean, what's going on? So just please, just think about, if you need outside help to get some better estimates, because I don't know where you got your estimates for the $3 million, $1 million wastewater treatment plant. I mean, we're in a real pickle here, and that's just not covering one item. We have mismanaged, underestimated in the last several, several years, and I just want to hope that we can get out of this jam. Okay? And thank you for listening.
Okay. We don't need to do anything. There's not a vote or anything? No, it's not on the agenda, so, okay.
So we have the town manager, town attorney and staff. So town manager.
We have upcoming meetings. We'll have our first-ever strategic plan that will be held between CFRPC and the Small Business Development Council. If you would like to write down the dates, January 6, 2026, from 5:30 to 7:30 will be our kickoff session. This will launch the process, and it will set the foundation, outline deliverables, and council participation will signal priority and build trust that will allow, align our vision. January 28, we will invite the businesses and faith-based community to come in for another session from 5:30 to 7:30. The focus is on the workforce, it will be on tourism, economic development, community partnerships. We also have February 3, which will be a residential session, also from 5:30 to 7:30. It will be a dedicated space for resident feedback. And then we have February 18 for town leadership session, which will wrap it up from 5:30 to 7:30, and this will facilitate the alignment between the council directives and town operations. We also have met with the county regarding the DOT projects and also the light at Amazon. I have a meeting tomorrow with the county and also with DOT at 3 o'clock, and I've been in conversation with our new county engineer, Laura Borgizi. I don't know if I'm saying that exactly correct, but I received an email at 5:19 that she has said that when the temporary CO was being issued to Amazon, that the concerns were discussed. They were concerns that Amazon trucks would be making U-turns at the hospital entrance, and that was unacceptable, as it would cause delays for emergency traffic trying to enter the hospital for treatment. It was discussed that we would put no truck U-turn signs at the hospital entrance, but as with most signage, there are many motorists that disregard the signage, and any delay into the hospital was not something that FDOT or the county was willing to gamble with. Essentially, it was decided to leave the intersection at Amazon open until such time as there was an operational need to place the barrels and force the truck traffic to take a right. They still believe on the county level that unless there is an They still believe on the county level that unless there is an operational issue, that the intersection should remain open at the Amazon. They do not want any issues with the hospital entrance due to, due to a decision that was made regarding ten Amazon trucks. They're trucks, not the, the big trucks. They're the Amazon-like van-like trucks, is what they're referring to, that are visiting the site, and that's between eleven PM and four AM. However, we are meeting again collectively to discuss tomorrow afternoon at three PM, so there will be more information forthcoming.
Okay. All right. We'll go. We'll start down here. Conley?
Just want to know if there's any update on Dow Hall, getting that open? I thought, we thought it was going to be November, then December, and...
Yeah, I just got with the fire marshal, and we passed the inspection there, so we're just waiting to get tables and chairs, and it'll be ready.
I'm sorry, waiting to get what?
Tables and chairs.
Okay.
We have to order those.
Okay. So are we thinking Valentine's Day?
I've, I've got to get with the company probably tomorrow and see. We got to get them on our vendor list and just order them and see how long it takes to get them.
And we have that in the budget? Tables and chairs for Dow Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
You also have to set rates, because remember, that's the other dilemma, is what are we going to charge for usage? That's set by council.
And then just, you know, want to wish everybody a great holiday season coming up. This is our last meeting of the year, I believe. So hopefully, we'll, everybody will have a safe and healthy Christmas holiday. So, Charlotte, just real quick, are those dates mandatory for, some of those dates are conflicts? I didn't know about these four, four meeting dates that you just said.
They've been sent out to council. We have sent it out in correspondence. It has...
Right. I mean, I got it, I got it this week, and I looked at it, and some of, so, so they're workshops, not meetings?
They're workshops, however, we would really like to have council input, because this is the first strategic plan, and this is where your voice needs to be heard.
Okay. So if we have meeting conflicts, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you need a majority, that's what I'm saying. I know, I looked at, I've got a couple conflicts possibly.
And it did go out before this week? We sent it out?
No, no. I, I saw that, but when I saw it, was the first time I saw those four dates, and I'm like, oh.
What was that last February date, please? You had the February third for residential and February something for town leadership?
Eighteenth, is what I have.
Eighteenth. Thank you.
So the first will be the kickoff session, January sixth. The second is business and faith-based on January twenty-eighth. Then February third is residential, and February eighteenth is the final with town leadership.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Five thirty to seven thirty.
Now?
First, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and good fortune in the upcoming year. I have already requested a sleeping bag and pillow for the first meeting in January, because everything seems to be moving forward to that agenda, so. And I'm not sleeping between you two. No. I'll be sleeping somewhere else. That was a joke. You can smile. It's okay. I think just, just to get my blood pressure down a little bit, I think people need to understand that when council starts a project, when council starts a project, and we, we come up with, this is what we'd like to do, whether it be police station, pickleball courts, swing sets and playground equipment and all like that, whenever we start a project and we approve it, and then, oh, somebody comes back up, and, oh, no, 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 we have to, no, we have to account for this, or we have to do this again, oh, let's start, let's start this whole project all over again. Then we start it all over again, and we go through the same discussion over and over again. And I think it's what some of our, my fellow council members are talking about, we keep going over and over. Well, when these projects start at a particular professed or hopeful amount of cost, and then we go over and over and over and over them, and we end up three years later actually coming pencil to paper, if you're watching everything else that's going on in this country, I don't know how you can be surprised at how much the cost goes up. And that's the problem. The problem is that we cannot act on what we approve at the time we approve it. And I don't mean at that moment, but let's just say within that six months. No, we have to wait two or three years and go over it again, you know, forty-five times, and then we approve it, and then we look back and wonder why the expense is so much higher. Frankly, I don't wonder. And that's my hope for 2026, is that we can be more efficient. If we have something that comes before council, and we vote on it legally, and we approve it, that it is eventually and finally done, and we can move forward. And with that, now, Happy New Year.
Deborah?
Well, I have lots of good news. The tree lighting at Journal Plaza was the most exciting and wonderful event. I've been to other tree lightings, and I think ours was the best. So everybody was so excited, and it was the children playing, and I just can't even imagine a better night. We didn't have rain, which is good, and it wasn't bitter cold. I mean, it was just a wonderful event. So I encourage everybody to go next year if you can, if you're available and can make it there. We just finished up last paddle, paddler standing, and it went from, we actually met a meet and greet Friday evening from eight to nine, and then the event started at nine o'clock on Saturday morning, and it just ended. Now, this is where it's all night long. They did have to take a break for two hours for a storm at one point, but it went from nine o'clock all night long, all day long, until about one o'clock today. And there was a chance we wouldn't have a last paddler standing, but we did. He lost by like, he didn't make it last year by thirty-five seconds or thirty-four seconds, and he was determined. And he, he made it, and it was really just a wonderful event. People came from everywhere. They came from Sweden. They came from all over, and everybody was so happy with our town. They're so pleased, and everybody's so nice. They're so pleased with the, the venue. They love our, they love the sunsets. I mean, the people were paddling into the sunset. It gave them encouragement that they could make it another round. Every hour, they had to do a round. If they got in early, they could rest, but maybe sometimes, like at the end, it was like two minutes, but sometimes, like early on, it was like fifteen minutes. But I'm just saying, these were committed people. But it was just a wonderful event. They're going to come back next year, and they want to maybe include a youth, a little small event, maybe just a little small app for youth, so that we can get the youth involved in our lakes. But I think it highlighted our lakes, which we're all very concerned about. I think it's, it's worldwide. It shows our concern. They were very pleased with that point, that we really care about our lakes. And so, and the Christmas parade is this Saturday. It starts at seven, so, I mean, it's the most, I think it's the best parade in the world, so I can't help it. But anyway, come out, enjoy it, and it's going to be another wonderful event, and I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Well, you know, I don't say too much, except have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and be safe.
This will be the only meeting in December, so we won't see anybody until next year. So like everybody else said, we want everybody to have a very safe and prosperous, happy Christmas and New Year. I hope we see you all at the parade Saturday, and looking forward to 2026 and see what, what we can get ourselves into next year, so. If there's nothing else to come before the council...